All right, everyone. It is 7:02. I'm going to call to order the regular planning board meeting of July 27, 2021. And take a roll call vote. Theo and all.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
Megan Mansali.
Here.
And Bill Spalding.
Here.
I'll make a new co-host just in case something happens, so. All right. Item number two, approval of meeting minutes for July 13, 2020. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes?
Yes.
All right. Anyone have any comments on them? All right. Comments, I'm going to take a vote, roll call vote for approval of the July 13, 2020 minutes, 2021 minutes, excuse me. Theo.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
And Bill Spalding.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Item number three, board discussion review of current zoning around the lake. Yes, Susan.
Do we have to do the July 12 minutes?
Yes, actually, we should. That's correct. So the July 12 minutes are the special joint meeting with the town council. Has everyone had a chance to look at those? They're pretty brief and to the point, so. All right. So I'm taking a roll call vote for approval of the July 12 joint meeting.
Do we have to have a motion? Or neither?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 12 and the July 13.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right. So we already took the vote for the July 13, for the July 12. Roll call vote, Theo.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
And Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Susan, for keeping me keep me in line. All right. So now we're going to item three, board discussion review of current zoning for the lake. I believe, I don't know if everyone was CC'd on Erin's email she sent out, but the the letters she emailed out. Was it this morning? You did that? Okay.
First thing this morning. So, yeah, everyone, I didn't include everyone on this. I just get worried for if everyone replied, replied all. So I did send the letter to the emails that I do have of property owners along around the lake, business property owners.
Okay.
And then I do have the labels made for the letters themselves. So I went through our assessor's database and called out each parcel that we discussed and created a database, and I will be sending those out tomorrow morning. So I apologize on the July had health issues and then some other stuff has been on my plate, but it will be out by tomorrow, so.
Okay, thank you. And I know I was kind of a stickler for making sure that it was actually mailed out to the property owners that are listed on the assessors because we've had a lot of criticism before that. Have you notified everyone who this may affect? So I'm just making sure that we cover all our bases and make sure that we do everything possible to make sure we get input from everyone who potentially could be affected by this. So I appreciate that, Erin, and thank you.
Yeah, and I can send the list around to folks if you'd want to see it to make sure there's no parcels that I may be forgetting. I'm pretty sure I got most of them and Bill, I believe I sent it to you, but I'm more than happy to send that around too, just to make sure I'm forgetting anyone, so.
That'd be great.
All right. So, yeah, if you want to send it out and like I said, if you want to email it to me and then be CC everyone else, there's there's no chance of.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Okay. So I don't know, is any other discussion right now on that? I know we kind of want to keep things really not defined yet until we get input from everyone, so we can obviously say that and show that we're keeping an open mind on this. So.
I have a question. What do we put as like the request to respond by date is a revised date for them?
I put August 13. So if it goes out tomorrow, that gives us sometimes what's today, the 27th, so Friday, August 13.
Okay, sounds good.
Basically, what I did is I took this when Megan, you and Bill worked on the original letter. You had put a date and I kept basically the same timeframe since so since it was going out today. I did about two weeks to make sure that we had enough time there, so.
That works.
All right. So we should get responses before our, let's see, I'm not sure what our next meeting is going to be. Yeah, our next meeting is going to be the ninth, so we would be able to discuss any responses on the 23rd. So I know this kind of puts a crunch on the timeframe for having something submitted for the fall, but obviously we can see how this plays out. I still think we do have time to get something in there, so we'll have to see how it goes. So. Does anyone else have any other thing to discuss on on item number three at this point?
Sorry, I clicked on the wrong thing. Can we talk a little bit about calendars? So the responses come in on the 13th. How do, how will we review that, review the responses? And and then what does that do to our timeline?
Well, we're hoping, because I actually, we already got one response already came back.
Okay.
And Erin, I'm not sure who this person met, D'Amico.
So.
Zens, so.
He's part of Cabot Cabin for in which you know, that's the 200, 400 Quanapawet. He's the only one that I email that I heard back from. They're not the official owners yet of 200 Quanapawet, but they said they'd be happy to participate, participate in a meeting of some sort. They said they're straight through till the end of August, but anytime from September 4, we could participate. So I mean, maybe we could try to get him. I know he says September, but if we could tell him, you know, we're kind of on a timeline, if he wouldn't mind just joining us for the 23rd, but.
Okay. So what we would so say we wanted to have a public forum on the 23rd. We would need to make that decision by our first meeting in August, which would be the ninth, sorry, the 10th. So by our next meeting, depending on type, you know, how many responses we get, we could try to set up to have a public forum to hear comments from owners and abouters, anyone around, you know, basically anyone in town. And again, I'm going to stress this again, we want to hear solutions. We don't want to hear just why people don't want anything changed. We're looking for solutions here to improve the lake, improve protection of the lake, improve businesses around the lake and basically improve things in the town. So I'm hoping that when we do have this forum that we get all positive things to move on and not what people don't want. So we'll have time for that when it actually goes to public hearing and we can hear it at that point, once we have something actually written down and ready to go. So so Theo, that's basically the first step, I think, to have the public forum. After that, potentially the first meeting in September, we could come up with text of a zoning article. And then do we, we still don't know when town meeting, fall town meeting is yet, do we?
It gets the sixth, I think it's scheduled, I think it's tentative for the November 6.
For November 6, okay.
He, Matt, so just so I'm making sure I understand, the intent is by our next meeting on on August 10 to determine if we want to have a forum on the 23rd. Then I'm assuming we would take our meeting on the 24th, try to synthesize what we've heard from from the town members and then the layout a strategy towards incorporating that feedback from the town members as well as the input from the balance of the board and develop a proposal from there.
Yeah, I actually, I was working the calendar on, I think we would have the public forum on the 24th. I'm sorry.
Oh, in lieu, in lieu of our meeting?
Yeah, well, it would be part of our meeting, basically. We would have it a public participation forum during our meeting, so. And then we could also, you know, if someone wanted to write in, if people can't attend that and they want to email us potential issues to look at. Maybe after viewing that, we'll be happy to accept those and then once we get into, let's see, September 14 would be our first meeting. Potentially at that point, start working on once we review the responses of what kind of text we may want to.
Matt, if I could jump in, if originally I was on the timeline thinking October 8 would be when the deadline for town council to receive any articles. That would be the the date we need to find out. And that's a full month before town meeting. So this is just going off past town meetings and when things were due. So if we're looking at October 8 for the deadline for town council to receive an article, obviously, we would need to wrap it up by the 28th of September. So we could have two public hearings in September.
We could, but that means we'd have to advertise. We would have to have it, we'd have to advertise two weeks prior to that.
Yes.
Which.
Two weeks prior to the September 14 meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which means we need to be able to hammer out whatever the text may be of the zoning article on the 24th.
I like using hammers.
And then get that published and have a, you know, and then start the public meeting process.
Yes.
So.
I think that's our timeline if we need to, meaning October 8, and that just needs to be confirmed. If town council could receive an article this and their second meeting in October, then we have more time, but that would be the date to confirm whether or not October 8 is when we need to wrap that Monday night for town council. I think that's a Monday, just been shooting back calendars.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so but by that schedule, a formal announcement needs to be published on August 31 to get us that two week window.
Yeah, I'm sorry, like just to correct myself. I town council meeting would be the 11th of October.
Okay.
Friday is the 8th, the 11th would be, I believe, the first town council meeting in October. And that would be probably the last chance we have to submit an article for Tom Warren. Again, we just have to confirm that date. So it wouldn't matter if it's the 8th of the of the 11th, because we wouldn't be able to meet again unless we have a special meeting in September. Right. For that first week of October. Which could happen too. I mean, that first week of October, the fourth, the fifth would be that Tuesday, if we did have to squeeze another meeting in. But again, that would have to be advertised.
I can confirm, well, I can give you an answer by next meeting or report back to Matt, so we have an idea, so we can frame a timeline. I'll check in with Sherry.
Because I think October 11th is, well, it's Columbus Day, and I don't think they meet that day.
Oh, good point. Susan, with all the like logistics today, that's awesome.
A lot of dates in my head this week.
Awesome.
So, but again, the
Maybe awesome.
Yeah. So on or I guess, so do we, do we have to give public, do we have to advertise the public meeting on August 24th, two weeks prior?
We, if I could answer that, we just need to open, we just need to open the public hearing and have that first
Okay.
date of the meeting advertised two weeks before. Then we can just keep it open as long as we need to. We don't have to advertise the other dates. It's just that first one that needs to be out in the public advertised.
So that would be August 24th meeting would have to be advertised in the paper or?
No, that that would just be a public forum, so that does not need to be advertised. Only legally, what is going to be on the warrant, the text of that would need to be publicized. So so people can comment on exactly what is going to show up on the again, what's going to show on the town meeting warrants. The issue is, once we get it, you know, we may write something, we have public comment and then it changes again. Then we need to revise it on the floor of town meeting, which again is gets messy, so. It is a very tight timeline we have going on here, so. It's going to be threading a lot of needles and hammering out quite a bit of stuff pretty quickly. So.
Okay.
So Theo, does that help with the timeframe or?
Yeah, so our next planning board meeting is August 10. We get responses by August 13. August, August 24 is our open public hearing where we.
Not, I'm sorry, not public hearing, it's it's forum. So we need to be careful how we, it's not a public hearing, because if it's a public hearing, then it needs to be advertised and.
Got it, got it. So so public forum on the 24th. At the next planning board meeting on the 14th, we want to finalize the text for the zoning article. And then, and then we would publish that for comment on the on the 28th.
Yeah, in a perfect world, on the 24th, we would somehow write this whole article up of what we want and get it ready for publication in the paper two weeks before our first public hearing.
Are we, so we're thinking that we're going to try to have a public forum and iron out the language for the proposed is, you know, the proposed adjustment to the zoning in the same meeting, because I would think that we'd want to have the ability to receive the feedback from the public and unless there's, you know, unless we have a starting point, I feel like we're going to get kind of a jumble of suggestions that we'd want to take a second and and think about before we put pen to paper and and start formulating something that's the, you know, going to be kind of the anchoring, the discussion. Unless unless we think that that's a realistic ability to get everything and then iron everything out. I feel like this is a recipe for you know, not getting to the finish line.
Again, it's a it's a tight timeframe, so we're going to have to evaluate that as we as we go forward. You know, obviously, we don't know what comments we're going to get and what's workable and what isn't, so.
You know, Matt, if I could interject, technically, we wouldn't have to have the wording done until the end of that week of the 24th. 14 days, if we get it advertised, it looks like maybe on the 30th. If we get everything out on the 30th of August, that would be 14 days, I believe. 14 days before our meeting on the 14th.
Yes, but we would still need to all, I believe, we all need to vote on what the text of the article is going to be. So if we did it after the meeting, then it would only be a subgroup that would decide.
Right. So. I have a suggestion too. I know we're giving to the 13th of August for response, but I'm wondering if maybe on the 5th of August, the Thursday, all the property owners should have received the letter by then in the email, maybe on the 5th, a reminder email goes out. Just nice cordial email saying, I hope you received our letter. Please confirm that or please confirm that you received our letter. We are looking for responses and planning to have a meeting. Once we receive, it's possible we receive enough responses before the meeting on the 10th. Is it? Or am I dreaming?
I, I think we could, especially the people that I have emails for. You know, that's an easy, you know, thing for me to follow up on even, you know, on Friday. I hope you receive my email. Would love to hear from you. You know, sooner the better. I think just the mailing is what's going to be difficult. Because again, I'm not sure who I'm directly, you know, who the letter is directly going to.
Right.
But emails, it's, I kind of have a face to the name already, so.
Well, it seems like it would show enough of due diligence if we emailed, letter, followed up with an email. And possibly had that open meeting forum to discuss opportunities for improvement and possible zoning bylaw amendments to benefit the businesses around the lake.
Yeah, I, it's a, it's a definite possibility. Again, it's going to be, it's going to be tight, but.
Right. Well, to Jim's point, maybe on that 10th, we do have enough information to pull together two or three scenarios that really are formulated to list and document what we're trying to achieve with the article. And then on the 24th, it becomes more of a fine tuning the wording. And maybe even between the 10th and the 24th, we get a chance for Tom Mullen Town Council to review to make sure it's all in the right order. And I know it's August, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is the path we're on, we're going to have to see how it plays out, so.
Well, I don't mind trying to expedite that and put the wording together and put a meeting together with Tom Mullen and Megan, I don't know if you're available to help me with that. If possible, once we get to the 10th.
I am available until the 16th of August, and then I am unavailable until the 20th.
Okay. Good to know.
So, yeah, I mean, we could get enough enough input that we can at least start the framework of what we want and then fine tune it as as we get more input and what we hear from on that public forum day, so. I think, I think we go with that for now and see how it plays out. So again, it's.
I, one more comment on this. Are we running into any type of pushback on this that's keeping us from doing it? Is there? Are there any entities that are pushing back on this, not allowing us to move forward with it as an article? I'm just curious if that's something to put all this effort forward and then to have it just like rejected or denied. If anybody does know of anybody or any parties that are pushing back against this, it would be good to know in some way or form. Because the effort that we're going to put in, I would like it to go towards the fall town meeting. And if 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 it's really not a possible thing, I'd rather not put the effort in. I don't expect an answer to this. I just rhetorically looking for, if we are getting pushed back from whether it's town council or town administration on this happening, then I'd rather not fight for it if it's not something that's going to go through.
I don't think there's any pushback on it yet, because again, we really don't have you know, we haven't come out with the bones of what we're actually proposing to do. I think once, once we spill out what we're thinking of, then there's going to be enough comment on it where people are going to be for or against it and we'll know who those people are.
Okay.
And in the end, it only matters who shows up to vote on it. So, you know, if town council doesn't particularly care for it, but the overall public does, then it doesn't really matter. They're they're just another vote at town meeting anyways.
Good point.
And just, I have not heard any pushback from my side of, you know, working internally.
Yeah, I haven't heard any pushback of the planning boards trying to improve conditions for businesses and at the lake. And I don't like it. So, you know, I don't think we're going to hear any of that at this point until we have something more concrete, so.
Yeah, I would say that I think that it's really hard to be with the level of detail that's been provided to date, everyone seems to think, you know, from what I can tell, you know, improving you know, access to the lake is a very easy sell. But then whenever we actually put something forth, put forth whatever we're going to put together with the additional restrictions or allowances for building owners, you know, that's when I think we'll really have a sense of the support or opposition from different groups.
Yeah. All right. So if there's nothing else on item number three, move on to item four, which is items not anticipated. So.
Before we move on, I I think for our next meeting, it might might not be a bad idea to sort of come up with an outline for the what the zoning text would be and maybe divvy that up. So then we're able to sort of try to do some of that work.
An outline as in from what direction now?
Well, I mean, at least like, you know, the form of a zoning article, you know, has to have these five elements. And so, you know, we could start to try to put, put some of those pieces together, knowing that there's a lot of detail that would still be open and unresolved. Just to, just to try to help us get ahead. We've got an outline of what what our goal is that should help us write it.
Okay. I think in the letter that the Bill and Megan came up with it, that's almost, you know, some of the wording can be taken right from there. So and in some of the more legalese that we need to put in there, like which districts, that's something that we could probably or what what lots are going to be included in this, we could probably, you know, work better on that. And then if we have input from certain businesses or people want more in, then we could. Work better on that, and then if we have input from certain businesses or people want more in, then we could. Certainly add that before it's hammered out and it, it goes, uh, for publication.
Okay.
So. So, yeah, that seems like a good idea.
Right.
Um, so I don't know if people want to look for past zoning articles that we could. Use as a wireframe and, and, uh, fill in, that might be a, a good thing to do also.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on that, or?
No, that's helpful.
Okay, so, uh. Item number four. Any discussion not anticipated by the chair, I know, uh, I don't have anything right now. I know. I don't know if anyone, any of the other board members at this point has anything they want to, uh, discuss.
Matt, this.
Go ahead, Jim.
Go ahead, Jim, yeah.
Um, so forgive me if this is just my ignorance, but, uh, within the last, uh, since our last meeting, received a pair of, uh. Letters and associated documents associated with the single family residence as well as a, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, uh. The proposed, uh, renovation, and I just wanted to see, I, when I read the documentation, it didn't seem like there's anything actionable for. This board, it appears if the single family residence is more of a board of zoning appeals. Um, document, and I just wanted to double check and make sure that there wasn't something that we were missing or needed to provide. Additional feedback on as it relates to those two matters.
Not, so normally for anything that goes before the ZBA, as a courtesy, they notify other departments. And other boards, so that's why we're on the list of receiving those. And typically, uh, if it's a homeowner doing work, uh, that doesn't really. Affect others than their butters, the planning board really hasn't had much comment on, on things like that. So typically, you, you review these and there's really not much. That the board would weigh in on, something like Dunkin' Donuts. I know with the Chinese added drive-through in there, they're actually not doing any work outside, it's all. Exterior of the building and interior of the building, again, that's kind of out of the purview of the planning board, so. Really going to comment on that, if for some reason that was a. A different type building and they were adding in access and things, at that point, that might be something that, uh, we would comment on. Uh, knowing that we. Know some site details a little bit better than perhaps some of the boards, uh, we have, could have some insight that we might want to share with the ZBA and comment on. I review those, I didn't see anything that. I thought. I would really want to comment, I don't know if anyone else has anything, so, again, this is the time to, if you do have something to. To share it with us, so I hope that explains a little bit of the process.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, yeah, it seemed like they were pretty straightforward proposals from my review of the documentation.
Yeah, uh, and again, I'm gonna upset it a hundred times. It would be nice if all the stuff was in digital form, so we could review it, uh. Instead of having it have to be delivered and actually other people can, in town can also review it before the meeting, but. I'm gonna keep saying that until it changes, so. So, uh, Megan and Bill, I don't know if you had any, any comment, and Theo on, on the. ZBA articles or ZBA items or any other. Items you wanna talk about at this point?
No.
Yep, okay, Bill.
Well, I do have, um, I did forward to Jim the same emails that I've sent to Megan. Um, and Theo regarding all the different links to what. An A and R is and subdivisions and the, the recent ones that we've done, but I, I didn't go through any of the onboarding. I did happen to catch Jim out in his, um, front yard when I was biking to work the other day, so I did stop and introduce myself face to face, it was nice to meet him. Um, then we talked for a little bit, just to chatted, so didn't really talk about any planning board stuff, so. I do want to get together and figure out, and this might be a little side, um, activity on how we do onboard people proper. Properly, and I actually want to make it bigger than just our planning board, maybe it starts with an outline or a template, but I, I. From what I understand from other boards in town, they, they do not have any onboarding process either. And it just seems really strange to me that there's no like, you need to go to a ninety minute. Q and A before you can sit on any of our boards. Um, even my daughter, who now just got sworn in yesterday at town hall from Betsy for the youth action, um, committee. Is going through an orientation and tutorial like tomorrow. I think it's just something our board should have, and maybe we can figure that out, if anybody would like to work on that with me over the next, um. Two months or so and then present, uh, next, I, I figure if we wrap something up like this sometime in September. It would be really cool to have, um, an outline, links, what we expect of. A new board member, what they can expect of what a meeting is, Jim's example tonight is a really good one. Just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and, well, I think that would be good in, perhaps we can get something and basically just. Post it on our, you know, on the, on the website, so. Not only do people that are coming onto the board, but someone potentially that will want to come on to the board would have all that information there. As a resource to look at, so.
And I think working with Jen McDonald and Erin to get some input would be great too, especially since we want it to look. Cool, like all the stuff that Jen's been working on, I know Erin has her hand up, I don't know if it's in regards to this.
All right, um, yeah, actually, it's kind of funny that you brought that up, we were talking, myself, Jen, Sherry and Steve. Last week about that onboarding for committees, um, and looking at it and just policies and procedures for folks too. So it's definitely something on our radar, um, and that we're gonna continue having conversations, but any input that you have here. Um, even if you, what you've learned, um, over your time, I think would be really helpful, um, so I, it's definitely on our radar of things to do and. It's, um, I don't think it's too difficult of a task either, so.
Okay, I've been doing this for my office, like revamping onboarding and how it all works, so it's something I've been working on for a bit, so I do have a lot of different. Ideas. Um, I do have one more thing, the Vision twenty thirty, the survey and everything is wrapping up. We have an advisory committee meeting on August third, and I'll report back to our board what came out of that meeting. Um, but I am so excited about. All the information that we pulled together from all the surveys, um, moving forward to. What our planning board could do with that information in the future.
That's really great.
All right.
I'm happy to help with sort of this onboarding outline.
Right. Are you sure?
Yep, I'm sure.
All right, have you ever used Miro, the software, M I R O?
No.
All right. It will be easy, it'll be fun, it's a sharing collaboration on, on cloud-based tool.
Cool. Great.
All right, uh, if no other board members have anything, I know Erin, um. You had a couple items that you wanted to talk about, so.
Yeah, um, so it's actually funny, Theo, the email that you just sent, I actually wrote to Matt yesterday or two days ago saying it might be helpful to the group. If I kind of just gave an overview of the work that, that I've been doing, um, I think there's a lot of things that you guys probably. You may, some of you may know that what I'm working on, others don't, and I think, um, sometimes it gets lost where. You know, even though my title is not exactly town planner, I am still doing a lot of proactive planning initiatives, um, for the, for the town. So, um, I just wanted to run through a few things, just to kind of keep, keep everyone in the loop of, of what I've been working on. Um, so yes, Vision twenty thirty, uh, I won't really get much more into that, I think we all know what that process was, and that will be wrapping up, and I. Like Bill said, alluded to, I think we'll have some really great, um, useful information too, I think it's been a, a while since we've had a public prop. From what I've heard and seen, public process like this, so I'm really excited to see what comes out of this, um. And exciting news too is we did actually receive some funding through MAPC to possibly start, um, a master plan process. Um, but, you know, that all is contingent on, um. Some other funding from the state, which, um, I haven't heard, um, from yet, so, um, you know, to be, to, to be determined. But I think it's something, again, that's definitely on our radar, and I think Vision twenty thirty, we have this great momentum now, and, um, I think it's a perfect time to. Continue that into, um, in this possible ma- master planning process, um, and I know I've alluded to that in the past, but. I just want to give you an update on that, um, another initiative I've been working, um, pretty closely with, and this is kind of where I. Get excited is kind of the whole regional planning, economic development approach, um, I've been working with Melrose. Malden, Stonem, Reading. And MAPC on doing, um, the Mystic Highlands Greenway, so it's a connection between Malden and, uh, Lake Quanapawat and Reading. Through some shared use paths using what we already have, um, so I did a walking tour about. One of those really hot days in June, it was torturous, I had to go home and shower after, it was really bad, um, but we walked, um, Wakefield. Were able to kind of look at some streets, see what makes sense to make connections between, um, Wakefield and Stonum, so, so that was great, so. I'm really building up a lot of great relationships with our, um, community planners, and, uh, I think we're find each other's, um. You know, are able to bounce some ideas off each other, so we're working on that, um, I'm also part of the MAPC North Suburban Planning Council, so we meet. Uh, monthly, again, this is a regional group that gets together as part of MAPC, just to talk about things that are going on. Hot topics, housing, transportation, again, um, probably not gonna get all the communities, but this includes Wilmington, Stonum, Reading. Um, I believe Melrose is in our group, um, Lynnfield, um, and I'm sure there's some other ones, so that's been really helpful, um. You know, uh, getting together to kind of discuss what we're working on, and I always hear very positive things. Of all the great stuff that's going on in Wakefield, so I just wanted to, to throw that out there, um. Uh, working with Shared Streets with Bill Renaud, uh, from engineering, we did receive a grant, um, to do some shared streets, uh, back in the, uh, back in the winter. For the Greenwood area, um, it was just announced on Friday that we actually received some other funding, um, for a trail by Veterans Field. Um, and so, um, working on getting that information out, and then the last thing, and there's a, a ton of other stuff I'm working on. But I just thought these were kind of the big things and I, you know, things I hear from other folks, um, what's important to them, but, um. Working on a housing forum with, uh, Massachusetts Housing Partnership, um, I'm really excited about this, um. I really think, um, you know, I, I think we can all agree, housing is a very hot topic in town, um, you know, um. So, really what this is gonna be is a forum where we really present data on housing at the state. Um, and then also at the local level, um, you know, what some of these projects do to schools, traffic. Um, and also just learn more about what we're seeing, um, you know, regionally throughout the state. Um, I'm really trying to paint this picture, um, it's not one way or the other, it's just really just laying out facts, um, with housing. And so I'm really excited about that, we don't have an official date, but, um, we'll be working with the Mass Housing Partnership to put that on, so. I just want to kind of, throw some stuff at you guys and, and give you updates on, again, things I'm working on, um, so. What I got, and if you have any other things, you have questions on, I'm always happy to answer.
Those are all terrific, it's, uh, it's really neat to hear that so much is in the works. Um, so I'm, I'm excited for all of that, I am especially, uh, excited for the housing forum and, um. Really curious to know, like, taking this data and putting in context by like how we compare ourselves to other. Uh, suburbanly communities on the North Shore, um, because I, I think that will also help illustrate. Where, you know, the, how perhaps, uh, where we want to add different types of housing to our housing stock, things like that, so. Really, really positive.
Hey Erin, uh, for the housing forum, and if you, we don't know, that, that's totally fine, but does, is there gonna be a discussion of different. Policies that are being utilized by peer communities and how they impact housing production or, or. Limit housing production, or is that part of that conversation, or is it just more of kind of trying to level set in terms of documenting where. What communities are doing what as it relates to housing production and housing stock.
Um, I think that will definitely be part of the conversation, uh, we're kind of working through right now what the agenda is gonna look like, um. But I do think, you know, not even around other communities, but policies in general that we're seeing, um, you know, I think too, the big thing that, um. Gets, what, is forty Bs, and a lot of people don't understand the policy with that, and how do we explain that, um, and, um. But I definitely think policy will be part of that one way or the other, but I'll definitely make note of that, and, um, we have a meeting actually tomorrow to discuss it, so. Thank you, that's a very good point.
Yeah, I would be curious, I mean, I mean, I think, obviously, right now for this board, you know, the, the focus is on the Lake Hue. District zoning, but, you know, I, I frankly think that housing is something that we should. Try to start thinking about in a, in a critical manner in terms of how this board or, or influence. Impacts housing in the community or, or lack thereof, and, uh, understanding where we are, I think is a good way to springboard that. But I, I think it's something that would be incumbent upon us to think about in a critical manner to try to, you know, uh. Make sure that we, we as a community, you know, have housing that can come online in a responsible manner that respects the neighborhood char- character. But also doesn't freeze everyone, anyone out from coming into the neighborhood if they, you know, want to. And so I would be interested, you know, to have that conversation, you know, after we get through the Lake Hue with other members of this board.
And I think that will be covered, everything from like accessory dwellings, um, you know, just diverse housing in general, I think, you know, we've seen a lot of. Some mixed use, multifamilies going on, but there, like you just alluded to, there's a lot of different ways that we could think of housing too. Other forms of housing.
Yeah, and, and I think educating people on. The need for housing and how. Do have a lot of housing stock that may be. Underutilized and somehow finding a way to repurpose some of that respectful way to the neighborhood and the community. Once we get that education out there, then we can start moving the needle and seeing that, you know, sometimes there are. Friendly forty B, there are ways to. To use the process, uh, and get some. Some good meaningful development in housing into town to benefit everyone, so. But, thank you, I appreciate that, so. All right, uh, if no one has anything else at this point. I'm going to, uh, go to item five adjournment, uh. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Go for it, Jim.
All right, a motion to adjourn.
All right, go here a second.
Second.
Second by Theo, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, uh, Megan.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Theo.
Yes.
Uh, Jim.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you, everyone.